Good evening. We'll call the Tuesday, October 3, 2017, meeting of the Everett Planning Commission to order, beginning with the roll call, please.
Chair Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
First item on the business tonight is the minutes from the last meeting. Has commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, any comments, corrections, or motions?
I have a quick correction. For page five, under Charlene Rawson's comments, the very last sentence where it says she is aware of the tax benefit programs on the East Coast Four, that should be senior citizens on a fixed income. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or corrections? Seeing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, thank you. Parliamentary procedure.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes. Any reports from the commissioners? Commissioner Dunn?
Report.
Commissioner Lavra?
No report.
No report.
Okay, none for me. How about staff, any comments?
Alan Giffen, Planning Director. For our next meeting, we will have a commission meeting on the 17th that'll be related to Metro and land use. On November 7, we will have the public hearing for the opiate substitution treatment facility code amendment. And so we will provide donors and get to the staff report in advance of that. And then...
Quick question on that. As part of the staff report for the clinic, are we going to get the information from the police department? I know there's been some research in terms of criminal activity around the clinic down in South Everett. Are we gonna...
I'll provide you what information I can get from the police department. I'm not sure what that will be, but we can provide that at the hearing or before. And then I wanted to ask if the commission was open to meeting on November 21. That's the week of Thanksgiving, and so it would be a couple of days before Thanksgiving. We don't have anything on the agenda that's pressing at this point, but in case we do need some time for continuing any earlier business or continuing with more of our metro discussion, I guess what we can do is reach out via email and contact all the commissioners and see what your availability or preference would be for that week.
Yeah, currently I'm available, Alan, but yeah, an email would be great.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission that on anything that's not on the agenda tonight, if so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none. Our first item of business tonight is actually a public hearing for the Snohomish County Courthouse addition. Prior to turning it over to staff, I just want to ask the commissioners if they had any ex parte communication regarding this, and if so, if they'd like to disclose it at this time.
No.
Nope. Seeing none. I'll turn it over to Alan.
Thank you. Alan Giffen, Planning Department, tonight has been advertised as a public dis-- excuse me, a public hearing and a potential decision meeting for the Planning Commission on the proposed addition to the Snohomish County Courthouse. I have provided the information that was presented at your August 15 public workshop in your packet, at least the PowerPoint. And just a refresher for those who may not have been here, or just to reorient you, the county campus, the area between Pacific Avenue on the south, Lombard on the east, Wall Street on the north, and Wetmore on the west, is the subject of a 2002 development agreement and rezone that the city approved, city council approved, to allow Snohomish County Campus to redevelop, which it did a major building addition, some demolition of old structures, and major overhaul of the county campus. That was done through a plan development overlay zone, which is a rezone. And so the plan was built out as approved by the city council, and so all of these sort of tan shaded buildings are existing buildings that are part of the existing campus. The proposed addition is located just to the north of the existing courthouse building. And the, at the August 15 public workshop, the county's representative did provide a bit of information about the purpose for that and some graphics. I'll just go through these graphics, just a couple of slides, about three more slides here. Unless you have questions, then we've got the entire PowerPoint from the August 15 meeting loaded on here if necessary. This is a view, let's see, this is the east elevation, so this is the view that you would see. This is the addition that would be built to the north of the existing courthouse building. You can see the existing older building right here. And the artist's rendering showing what that would look like in a little bit more of a 3D version of the drawing. This is the north elevation facing Wall Street. So if you're standing on Wall Street and looking south, this is the addition that would be in the center of the existing courthouse building. You can see the older building on either side of the addition here. And again, rendering with a plaza that is on the east side of that addition. This is the sidewalk on Wall Street under this rendering. And this is a view looking, well, really, the, this is the west elevation if you were standing on Wetmore and facing the proposed building. This is the addition onto the north side of the existing building. And this perspective is looking southwest from approximately the corner of Wetmore and Wall Street. So this is the sidewalk on Wall Street here, the addition from the existing courthouse building would be in that location. So with that, that's just kind of an orientation for people to see what the proposed building would look like. The plan development overlay zone is, was adopted with a master plan that had, well, I'll just go back to the original slide here, with the, with all of these buildings that have been built, and the addition here to the north would go into the existing open space plaza on the north side of the courthouse building. Under the plan development overlay zone regulations, any modification of an approved master plan that reduces the amount of common open space is subject to review by the Planning Commission with the recommendation to the city council. And that's really the reason for this coming to the commission tonight. The proposed addition does not conflict with any of the standards that were established through the plan development overlay zone process. And the remainder of the campus, aside from the addition to the north of the building, modification of the plaza to the north, removal of some of the plaza, and by landscaping, replaced by landscaping to the northwest of the existing courthouse building, everything else will remain the same on the remainder of the campus. The packet, your commission packet, has a resolution recommending approval. And I would say that in the findings on your resolution, it does mention that this is a proposed rezone. And the reason for that is because the master plan was adopted through a rezone process, and in our code, any rezone that is proposed, site-specific rezone, requires that the Planning Commission make the three findings that are listed in your resolution, that the rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan, bears a relation to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the proposed rezone promotes the best long-term interest of the Everett community, and the third, the rezone mitigates adverse impacts upon existing or anticipated land uses in the immediate vicinity. And so with that, I know that we do have county representatives here. I don't believe they were planning to make a presentation, but are here to answer any questions that you have or respond to public testimony. So unless you have questions for me, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions, staff, before we open up the public hearing? Seeing none. I didn't get anybody to sign up for a sign-in sheet, speaker sheet, but if you'd like to address the Planning Commission regarding this now is your opportunity to do so.
While Victor's walking up, we also had a letter from Allen Doorway. Will that be submitted or included as part of the public comment?
Yes, it's in your packet and is part of the public record and the city's response to the letter from Pastor Doorway.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. I forgot.
Mr. Harris?
Good evening. Victor Harris, 3017 Lombard, beautiful downtown Everett. As I consider what I've heard and seen over the last few years about the county campus, about courthouse projects, this addition will be a welcome addition, I think, to the courthouse, to the courthouse system. But as I look at the structure, and I look at the buildings that have been inside them, it still strikes me as this whole thing is disjointed. And it's a question of when this whole campus, budgets aside, taxpayer money aside, it's a question of when these buildings will be removed and a complete structure be put on that site. Because I think we're doing what's necessary, but I think we're kind of leaving some things behind. And I guess maybe part of the question asked, do is whether or not any of this is, any further redevelopment or removal of those buildings would be limited by historic designations or any of the other things. Because I think in the long term, in the long range, planning somewhere, this is going to have to change completely. If this new building is the blueprint for what follows, then, you know, merging, connecting the buildings, you know, would be quite, you know, quite appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Alan, I believe, at least at the public workshop, for some reason, I can't remember what the lifespan of the redevelopment of the existing courthouse would be. I don't know if there's a, the architects here or something.
I think I'd encourage the response from Snohomish County.
Jeff Hens with Snohomish County Facilities. Your question was the lifespan of the new structure?
Yeah, so I know they were doing earthquake in another refurb to the entire structure. And I guess the question is, what's the lifespan of that? Victor was asking, you know, when will this actually potentially be removed? And I thought it was increasing the lifespan of this building.
Well, the addition itself, you know, will probably have a life just similar to the existing courthouse, you know, 40 to 50 years. Whether or not the existing courthouse that we're going to remodel can last that long, that would be, you know, in question.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on this hearing tonight? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes. Any other, so we have a resolution before us this evening, Resolution 17-09. Is there any additional comments or questions?
I just have one comment. I, you know, just taking into account what Victor Harris mentioned about there being some disjointed aspects to the county campus, you know, I think we've all pretty much accepted that there is an eclectic collection of styles there. You know, there's some very historic styles, and then there's some stuff from the 1960s and 70s that's not so great. And then there's some beautiful new buildings as well. So I think it's kind of, you know, it is kind of representative of who we are, you know, but in a sense, kind of a pluralistic collection of different, you know, phases and eras. So, you know, I kind of, I understand the idea of having it be sort of a comprehensive thing, all, you know, sort of, sort of, you know, similar treatment throughout the entire complex. But I think that eclectic and pluralistic aspect of it is actually a strength. And, you know, there may be more portions of the courthouse that go away over time, you know, and we can make improvements as we go, but it's kind of like, you know, kind of like a big, like a big Amish house, you know. They just keep adding on to it and doing different things. And it becomes a thing of beauty unto itself. And it's unique, and it has variety, and I don't, I personally, as an architect, don't have a problem with it. So that's my comment.
Thank you. One other comment, the one other building, the Spanish building, that is a historic structure, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The Spanish-style building.
The Mission Building.
Yeah, is that Mission Building. That one is actually on the historic records, is that right? Or no?
It's on the National Register.
Yes, thank you, David. It is on the Everett Register.
Thank you. Victor brought that up too, so I thought...
Oh, and the National Register as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Quick question. And I just don't know, the covered parking garage for the county, is that open on the weekends? Is that available to the public, or is that typically closed?
Closed.
Okay. So, and it's just a request. Now, we have no power here, but during construction, maybe make that available to the church so that they can have parking for their congregation. That's probably when a lot of the construction's going to be happening, is on the weekend. So, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Let the record state it. Commissioner Tisdale has joined us.
Tisdale's in the house.
Any other questions regarding, so we have a resolution before 17-09, so any additional comments or motions?
I'd make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Resolution 1709.
Number 1709.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland? Yes. Thank you. I guess our next item of business here is Everett District Alliance. Briefly?
Are there all the new faces going in?
It takes a while to get some.
It was half the way, wasn't it?
Davis Solheim, Law Range Planning Manager, and I'm going to introduce the folks from the Everett Station District Alliance for this presentation.
Ed Peterson and Nick Bratton from Forterra.
Good evening. We're delighted to be here with you tonight. You may have heard about the activity that we've been involved in for a while. It's actually been 40 months. Started in May of 19, or 2014. And we had a, we did an invite to the neighborhood to participate in a conversation about their neighborhood and what they would like to see happen there. We invited property owners and business owners. And through two, seven meetings in 2014, we met regularly and then posed the question in January whether we ought to continue meeting and whether we ought to get organized as a group. We did that. And so during 2015, we spent time talking about a vision. What could this neighborhood be? And we avoided short-term discussion and took a 20-year look. What would we like this neighborhood to be in 20 years? In late 2000, in May of 2016, we invited 100 key stakeholders from Sound Transit, Everett Transit, Community Transit, Economic Alliance, City Planning, County Leadership for a conversation about this area around the Everett Station, and discussion about what responsibilities each of these organizations have for the quality of that neighborhood and for work towards the redevelopment of the neighborhood. Well-attended, great discussions, commitments of support from all entities, all of which led to a decision to become a membership organization. And then in June of this year, we actually established the organization as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. And I can tell you that there will be further building of this organization. And we are, in fact, studying the idea of a public development authority along the lines of what Seattle has used for development of a number of its key areas or establishments. So we're established 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. Forterra, nonprofit environmental development organization, and Hope Works Social Enterprises, a nonprofit corporation, have been providing some support, facilities for meetings, fiscal agent services and the like. And Nick and I are here today as the facilitators for a series of study workshops that have occurred over the last nine months. Couple things I want to say leading off. One is, we have one of the most beautiful train stations, the Everett Station, in the region. The expectation when it was built, there was a great vision around it, that the neighborhood would develop housing and jobs around this beautiful facility, which is a transit hub for our community. We're now 15 years later, 15 and a half years later. Ribbon cutting was in May or February of 2002. And what we've learned is that there is an absence of a private-public partnership to drive development. We're also, there is an absence of a master plan for what should be developed. And there is an absence of interest from developers because of the development environment. So these are challenges for our community when we have this transit center that not only serves Everett presumably, or not only serves this neighborhood, but is a countywide resource. It is the transit center for all of our county. This is really important because... Let me see. This neighborhood and the transit center is the economic link to downtown Everett, Waterfront Place, the Colleges, Riverfront, and the Everett Mall. The area around the Everett Station should be a transit-oriented neighborhood where lots of people live and work who want to use public transit to reduce drive times. The area around the Everett Station should be a friendly, inviting, enjoyable area owned by all our residents, by commuters, by employees in the area, and those who live and work in the area. The city of Everett needs to accommodate population growth in the 20-year population projection. This is an area that can accommodate significant growth. The neighborhood is not attractive and does not feel safe. The neighborhood is cut off from downtown Everett with no plan to produce friendly connections between the two. The neighborhood is not attractive to developers. So these are all concerns that we are bringing to you tonight as a part of a dialogue, the beginning, we hope, of a robust dialogue between the Everett Station District Alliance and the city of Everett. We have been supported in all 40 meetings since we started by staff from the Planning Department, city of Everett. And we work very closely with Metro Everett Planning Process and feel very pleased about the partnership and the exchange of ideas and the support that has been there. So tonight, we're here to share with you the results of a study that we have done in the last nine months. And I'm going to turn it over to Nick to do this next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Planning Commission, for making time for us to share this information with you this evening. Dry the arrows. So as a quick geographical overview, we just want to quickly highlight here the boundaries of the Everett Station District as we see them as a group. This does not necessarily align with those geographical boundaries as established by the city, but this seems to make the most sense within, for the property owners, for the business owners, for the people who are members of the alliance. So this is the area that we're talking about when we describe the Everett Station District. And this, much of this is part of what the city is including in the Metro Everett Planning Process. We did convene a series of five workshops, as Ed mentioned. We're grateful to Snohomish County for providing the financial support to convene these workshops. What we wanted to do in these workshops was to engage community members, business owners, subject matter experts, people who had very creative ideas and a lot of experience in these fields, to share their best thinking with how can we achieve the goals of the vision. So the five major topic areas that we covered in our series of workshops, we wanted to look at developer incentives. As Ed mentioned, there's not a lot of activity happening in the neighborhood. What can we do to change that? We wanted to look at green neighborhoods. How can we beautify and add park space and open space and stormwater management to the district? How do we improve connectivity, both within the neighborhood and from the neighborhood to other parts of the city? And how do we address parking as traffic and demand for commuter space and growing businesses continues to expand? And how do we deal with the safety issues on the streets? Ed addressed this already. So through the course of these five workshops, we had over 70 participants from the neighborhood and from organizations that have a depth of experience in these areas. And we wanted to share some of the findings and recommendations that came out of these conversations in the spirit of improving the work that the city is already doing around Metro Everett. We've been fortunate in that the timing of these two processes has largely overlapped and been in parallel. And members of the Everett Station District Alliance have been engaged in the metro planning process. We've attended workshops and given input. And we're really grateful for the work that the city is doing to this end. We think that the Metro Everett Planning Process is fantastic, and there's been some great public outreach and engagement. We want to add to this and supplement the work to bring a slightly different perspective from this neighborhood as one component of the Metro Everett area. So just to run through some of the findings that we would like to include in this, Ed, you want to talk a bit about the developer incentives?
We have been very much aware of the challenges developers face in development in this area. And it came out loud and clear. We had 12 different developers join us for this particular workshop to, in which we posed the question of what's the right environment for... workshop to, in which we posed the question of, what's the right environment for you to be able to take an interest in developing in this neighborhood? And one of the key findings was that there's more risk at being first in the development of a neighborhood like this one. And that there would have to be some way of incentivizing those who, risk takers, the developers that are going to go first. It's a complicated and challenging environment to work in with lots of issues, many of which we've identified to work on and have strategies to address, but it will take time. And part of the strategy in getting the development going in the neighborhood is to do some catalyst projects. And so there might be a variety of ways in which to create those incentives. We're not here to recommend specifics, only for all of us together to recognize that if we're going to transform this neighborhood, we're going to have to create an environment that is conducive to development. Heights is an important variable in that equation, as is parking. And so these factors really need to be thought through strategically if we, in fact, expect development to happen in this neighborhood.
Two specific recommendations that came out of this conversation that we'd like to bring to your attention is that of increasing, or sorry, adding transfer of development rights to the incentive zoning package that could become part of the Metro Everett Plan. We understand that there are some provisions for bonus height, additional density. There is a palette of choices from which developers could choose to achieve additional densities in parts of the Metro Everett area. For those areas that could use that option within the Everett Station District, we'd like to propose adding transfer of development rights to those choices. And linked to that is, we'd also recommend that the city explore a new infrastructure financing tool that is a state-level program. Other cities in the region have looked at, Seattle is using it, Mountain Lake Terrace is looking at it, Edmonds Shoreline, other nearby cities are looking at this tool. And this is a conversation for another time, that's probably a whole briefing in and of itself, but there's a chance here for the city to generate new revenue that is otherwise inaccessible, that can support the funding of infrastructure investments, that can help support growth in the city. We also talked about ideas for a green neighborhood, and we're really happy that this has been a major component of the Metro Everett planning process thus far. Many of the recommendations that our work group came up with are already in the draft materials for the Metro Everett Plan. So one major piece that came out of this is, we'd like to propose the creation of at least one new park. I believe the setting guidelines call for one park for every five thousand residents. This neighborhood could potentially be home to five thousand residents, and currently it's not a park there. Given the limited amount of public land that's potentially suitable for a park in the neighborhood, we'd also like to propose adding features that would be found in a park to the existing cityscape, adding trees, landscaping, and so on, to kind of create the feeling of a park even though there isn't a lot of park space available in this neighborhood. Would also like to recommend that the city look at ways to manage public space for multiple benefits, particularly around stormwater management. So how could city space that may be underutilized at present be better employed to handle stormwater runoff through natural infrastructure, things like that? Would also propose the establishment of tree canopy goals at the scale of the neighborhood and the scale of the Metro Everett subarea. And this is one of those examples of things that has already come up in the planning process that is in the draft materials. And we're happy to see that, and we encourage the city to continue to pursue those goals.
And I would add to that, that green infrastructure is an important ingredient in creating the environment that developer, that would attract developers. A safe neighborhood, but a green neighborhood, it begins to provide some of the amenities that would be of importance to a developer in developing a project in this location. We need to plan for a pedestrian-friendly environment, friendly to eight-year-olds and eighty-year-olds who want to use our transit system. We need to plan for a robust bike network so that people can bring their bikes in on transit and be able to get to the interurban trail, or to the valley, or to the waterfront, or to the colleges, or to the mall. We have buses already in the neighborhood that need to be planned for as this transforms. Trains are a fixed element, cars, taxis, freight. This is an industrial neighborhood in any regards, and in certain areas in particular. So freight corridors is an important ingredient. And of course, light rail eventually will come to this neighborhood, and this will be the northern terminus. So connectivity really matters. We brought in the presidents of the colleges, the head of the port, the developers of the riverfront, the head of the business improvement for the downtown Everett Association, and the general manager of the Everett Mall for a conversation about what their needs were. And they're all very concerned about having user-friendly access to the transit center and routes and connectivity and ways of planning how to effectively, efficiently use the transit center for their benefit. So we've developed some ideas on transit or connective corridors, walkability for neighborhoods that surround the transit center, and a lot of discussion about how do you get from the Everett Transit Center to Colby and Hewitt? A walk that isn't very pleasant and that has to cross Broadway, which is seen as a big obstacle for people. And it's up a hill, pretty high grade. And so ideas about, you know, long-term look at what we can do to connect those two. We've talked about gondolas, we've talked about covered escalators, we've talked about a tram that runs back and forth, we've talked about circulating buses that connect people on a rapid six-minute, ten-minute basis. But it's one of the key elements for developing the neighborhood is to think strategically about all these vehicles and blending them with bicycles and pedestrians in a safe, Parking has been a big topic of conversation. And first thing I would say is, surface parking in this neighborhood, if it's a transit-oriented development neighborhood, is the wrong use of that land. So from there, we go to, Sound Transit is taking our money for a light rail system that's coming many years from now, but with an understanding that there would be some early wins for our community. And the one that we've landed on that we think is a win-win-win is a parking garage on the east side of the train station on land owned by Sound Transit that's in proximity to both the trains and buses and the future, hopefully the future light rail system, and the population of people we expect to be in the neighborhood. What this does is it frees up land for higher and better uses. And this would be buildings that provide housing to significant numbers of people over retail and commercial. And it would tie to, and I'll get to it in a minute on the last slide here, a very critical, central catalyst development that we have in mind. Along with this parking garage, we also are recommending that countywide, we take a look at satellite parking options at locations closer to where people live in our county, in the north part of the county, the east part of the county, the Lake Stephens area, where that would be satellite operations that would quickly transport people who park there to the transit center. Because right now, those people come and park in the Everett Station neighborhood, fill up the neighborhood at six AM in the morning, go away, are gone all day long, come back, get in their cars, and go home. And that is not the best use of our land for the purposes of creating a neighborhood and for the transit needs of our community. And then with that will come time-limited parking and paid parking. And we think that's a good thing to anticipate and plan for, for the kind of neighborhood that we're going to, we're going to hopefully have as we move forward. Safety is the other big issue that is on the minds of property owners and business owners. They're concerned about graffiti, they're concerned about litter, they're concerned about needles on the streets, they're concerned about people sleeping on business properties. So we had a very, this is probably our largest workshop, I think we had twenty-seven people at this one, all of whom are involved in one way or the other with law enforcement or other aspects of this issue, including property owners. And it was a very strong call for action on this. And the concept that we've landed on is that the Business Improvement Association of Downtown Everett is a model that provides these kinds of services, not only here in Everett, but it's a model that exists nationwide. And these would be services around safety, graffiti removal, litter cleanup, hospitality, outreach to those in need in the neighborhood, and a variety of services that can be funded by property owners who would participate in the funding of a Business Improvement Association. So that would not necessarily be a Metro Everett element, but it is an idea that has importance for discussion with the city as this project moves forward.
So with that, those are the highlights of the recommendations that came out of the series of workshops. We did bring along copies of the report summarizing that, looks like you all received those. So we'd be grateful for your attention, looking through that and thinking about how some of these ideas can fit into the broader context of the Metro Everett Plan. You'll see there are also ideas and recommendations in there that pertain to Snohomish County or to the community at large. We tried to divide those out based on where it made the most sense to kind of have those fit in. And we also want to remind everyone that we do meet the third Thursday of each month, and everyone is welcome at these meetings. And we do have more information on our website, so please visit that and see what kinds of resources are there. We're also happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? This time?
How many of, some of this has already been included in the Metro Plan, correct?
Well, thanks again for coming in.
I had a quick question. You know, when you were talking about parking and a parking structure on the east side of Everett Station, and you had mentioned disdain for people coming in and parking here and then getting on and going into Seattle. Was that, did I hear you say that there was potential for selling the parking and maybe generating some sort of, you know, income? Or was it just like, we don't want that at all? Was that the gist of it?
Over time, there will, I think, need to be time limits on parking and paid parking in the neighborhood itself. How the parking facility would work would need to be worked out. We're not creating any particular recommendations, other than that the design be flexible, that there be, we do a hard look at commercial activity on the ground level of the parking facility, and that the upper levels of the parking facility be designed in such a way that can be converted to housing in the future. As more people take advantage of the transit system and get off the roads, they may or may not need the parking facility. So recognizing that it can be an asset in other ways as well, there was discussion about thinking creatively about what that parking facility would be.
I guess the reason I'm asking is because it's come up before, and we've talked about, you know, just, so the reality is, people are going to be coming in from all over, like from Stanwood, or Marysville, or, you know, Granite Falls, or who knows how far out they come from, you know, maybe La Conner, you know? And then they drive down and they come here and they hop on a sounder train and go into Seattle, maybe to a football game, you know? But it just seems like it's the reality of it, that's the reality of what that, it is a regional transit hub, you know? So it is realistic to expect people to come and use it that way, and then there would be large numbers of people doing that. So it, I'm not sure when I hear you say, well, it's not good for our community, we don't want to be a parking lot for Seattle. Well, of course not. But it seems like there is, there are sort of more enlightened ways that that could be managed, you know, and maybe woven into this whole.
Well, and our recommendation is that we provide for that in the form of a parking facility.
Yeah, I think there's a distinction here that we're not advocating for deterring people from coming in and using this transit resource. This is a great transit resource here. And if people are coming from Stanwood, or La Conner, or Granite Falls, that's great. Like, we're excited that people are using this great transit resource. The point being that we want to offer more choices to those commuters so that, you know, if they, if there are satellite parking and options, then maybe those people are taking a bus in as an alternative to driving in, should they want that choice. I think Ed's point about the parking garage is, we're redistributing the parking that's currently on the surface and putting that in a structure so that that existing public land can be used more efficiently for residents and business and so forth.
I totally agree with that, yeah. Thank you.
In addition, the vision has four and a half thousand people living in this neighborhood and a thousand new jobs, and many of those jobs will be in restaurants and cafes and other businesses at the ground level of buildings that are housing people above. And the commuters that are coming into Everett then would have a reason to stay, you know, to have food and to, you know, whatever the other businesses in the area.
Have a farmer's market at the station.
An early learning center, for example, that might be sited right there across from the station where people could come in and have a place for their kids while they go and do their business in the city or using the transit system.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Go ahead, for sure, Dan.
Okay. I appreciate the comments on green space. If you can also consider, like, reducing toxic exposure in the form of pesticides mainly, so sustainable landscaping as an option are encouraged. I also like that the Lowe's building is included in this, and it offers kind of a policy, a policy vision for that space. So I think it's great that we're ahead of the game, right? If that's getting redeveloped, there's policies to look at. I don't know how to phrase this, but I noticed that in the Safe Streets part, in the attendees, that there's a certain person who has a neon sign and has brought some negative attention to the city, whereas this is doing something very positive. So I'm wondering if you have any comments on like, on how to avoid or what went wrong in that situation that it seems like one person in particular kind of got frustrated? And I don't know if it was this process or other ones, but that they, they stopped moving forward with this process.
I'm totally in the dark here. Don't have any idea what you're talking about.
I would answer that. I serve on this committee, and we ask that question of that individual. And he is all behind this. That frustration is like something you might have at home with your husband, but you still go to work. And so he is all behind this. And most recently, the Smith Street Group, I believe they're called, that's been dealing with the nuts and bolts of that, has been asked to join ours. to join ours. So there's one united voice as opposed to having multiple voices.
We amended our boundaries about four months ago to include, we stopped at the freeway, but we've included now Smith Street, 41st Street as a part of our neighborhood and invited all the Smith, Smith Street stakeholders to join.
Oh, good.
The organization.
And that actually kind of segues into what I was gonna ask in terms of the Metro Plan and matching boundaries. How difficult would it be to expand and have the boundaries match? I mean, would that just be at this point in juncture in the process?
Alan Giffen, Planning Director. As part of our, one of the reasons that we're doing the Metro Plan is to be consistent with the Vision 2040 Regional Growth Strategy. And they do have guidelines in the, in Vision 2040 and through the Regional Council for keeping areas compact and walkable and stretching it all the way to Forty First Street while it does, you know, kind of unite the Everett Station District area into the Metro Plan. It does really extend beyond the recommended guidelines by the Regional Council to keep something compact and walkable when you consider the north end of the metro areas up around Everett High School and it's stretching it down to Forty First Street and east of the freeway. It's not really any, any longer a walkable, compact neighborhood. So, you know, the current geography for Metro is about roughly a square mile, six hundred and fifty acres roughly, and so it's kind of pushing the, the external limits of what's compact and walkable.
Sure, sure. Thank you, if that makes sense.
I, you know, I just, I think that it's really probably a good idea for the Everett Station District to almost be considered like a satellite of the downtown, you know, with really strong connections. You know, I'm not always in favor of like, creating a new town center somewhere like out in, you know, you know, out in an industrial area somewhere, you know, which is oftentimes what, what seems to be preferable to some developers just because it's like, starting with a clean slate. But I think that to, to kind of create a sort of a central identity around the station or the, the station district and give it its own sort of, sort of concentrated area that is like a, like a satellite, you know? And then I've always thought we needed a trolley that takes you from Everett Station all the way across downtown and over to the waterfront, but I'm always told that that's just an idea whose time hasn't come yet, you know? But, you know, how fun would that be? You know, you know, coming, coming in and, or getting off the train and getting on a trolley and just experiencing all these fun things, you know? I mean, it could be a really fun thing. I mean, and, you know, a park, you know, having a, I don't think a densely forested park would be such a great idea, but a wide open green space with lots of water features would be really fun. I mean, I think that anything you can do to sort of create a sense of fun down there would be just terrific, you know? And, and height and density and I think there was an old vision plan Everett had and they didn't want anything to obstruct the view of the Everett Station. They wanted it like a jewel on top of a hill that everybody would see, but I'm, I'm kind of have the opposite, you know, opinion that you should have everything grow up around it and it should just be enveloped by all these tall buildings around it. So all of those things are, I think you, you know, yeah, just to get somebody to go and, you know, take the first step, you know, build the first high-rise building down there, a nice mixed-use project, you know, I think it'd be super terrific.
Well, think about the concept of transit-oriented development. I mean, nationwide, we are looking at a new concept in urban planning around transit, aligning transit, jobs and, and housing in ways that are in proximity to your whole transit system and that create a particular kind of amenity that there's a good section of our population that want that. And so I think within the Metro Everett area, this is a distinct neighborhood within a distinct set of opportunities and a distinct set of needs.
One more question before we, so this is a lot of work and really good recommendations. Are you gonna, is staff gonna respond to the alliance with how these recommendations have actually been incorporated into the Metro Plan or how the recommendations are gonna be incorporated into other plans or?
Well, as mentioned by Ed earlier, we've been active participant all along with the Everett Station District Alliance, so that report's hot off the press. I actually haven't seen the whole document yet myself, but I imagine that there's not any surprises in there that we haven't heard and talked about, but we'll go through that and look at it and see what's, hasn't been included, because in these conversations have come up and so we've already dropped those things into chapters and if things are missing, then we'll look at that and try to incorporate that.
And I have to confess, I'm mainly asking for my benefit to know how this is being incorporated, because I, I haven't participated in all the meetings and I'm curious as how it's being incorporated into the Metro Plan.
Yeah, you know, and I, I know that they've taken a look, for example, we've reviewed a first draft of the Parks and Open Space Chapter and I'm sure that they have, and that's why Nick made some comments about that, because some of the things about tree canopy, for example, is covered in that chapter. So we have other things in the Land Use Chapter that are gonna be bringing you in two weeks and so you'll see those things. And so there's a couple of things, fine tuning, some issues that we'll have to look at and incorporate, but we still have time to do that, so. But just one other thing I do want to say, you know, it's been really good about this partnership because it has established some conversations and some awareness of issues. You know, one of them was after walking out of one of the meetings, perhaps at the Wirehouse Room, walked outside and looked at Thirty Second Street and thought, wouldn't this be great to have a farmer's market there? And so next year on Wednesday nights, the farmer's market is gonna be at Everett Station. So we, we established a conversation with those folks and they're gonna start a brand new market. So four to eight o'clock on Wednesday is next year down at Everett Station. So again, that's kind of creating some placemaking and those, it's those conversations about, you know, getting activity that's been happening with the District Alliance that's allowed us to, you know, take those ideas and see what we can germinate real quickly.
Richard, on your discussion, Tom Hengston from Everett Transit was here and we weren't sure, I followed up at one of these meetings, and the connector that Ed talked about, the three electric buses that they got in the legislature, they will go into service late eighteen or nineteen, and that's to take folks from Riverfront, the new development, into downtown and down to waterfront, out to the college and out to the mall. So it's not a trolley, but it's neat, it's clean and it's, it's, it's here, so, yes.
One last comment I can leave you is the farmer's market comment David made reminds me, key centerpiece for the thinking that we're doing is that Thirty Second Street between Smith and McDougal could be a very wonderful centerpiece for the neighborhood. It could include a community meeting space, it could include a small park, pocket park, it could include the farmer's market, it could include a police substation, it could include cafes and food carts, it could be, and if in fact the light rail system ends up going on between McDougal and, and Broadway, it would be the connector between the two. And it could be that hub that brings the neighborhood together, it could be that location that is the focal point for the connecting to downtown Everett with some sort of a dedicated system of connections. So I think collectively, we've had great conversations that have led to some really creative and interesting ideas. They're visionary. The issue now is how do we create an action plan that would go with that and build it incrementally as resources become available? Thank you for having us this evening.
Great, thanks for all your hard work. So we are on to item three of our agenda, which is Metro Everett, Building Heights and Urban Design.
Well, Neil's is, the network card just dropped down. Neil Stigusen is gonna walk through this stuff, but he's gonna, we're gonna change laptops so we can get into the internet. Just between Neil's and Josh Montroy, who's back there smiling, our new GIS analyst, and Josh, you can get a little closer up here, so.
Sure.
It's his first Planning Commission meeting, so, but Josh has done a lot of these 3D modeling of, of these buildings and so it's been a new tool and resource that we've had that very much appreciate his work and Neil's work on this, and so they're gonna walk you through this tonight.
And people that take the bus down there. They have a name, he's just said it's. Because you don't have to drink. They don't charge at the parking lines. Well, some of them like ashwes.
Good evening, Neil Stigusen, Planning Staff. For tonight's discussion of Metro Everett, we have two topic points, one for building heights and the modeling that staff's done the last few months, and then one on the draft of the Urban Design Chapter, and we thought we'd do the building heights first one. It's a little bit more fun and engaging, can be living. We also have some models that we can show you if the internet's working for us and if the computer behaves. And then some of that discussion may help with discussions with Urban Design Chapter. If you have any specific questions on the modeling and how we did that, hopefully Josh can answer those, especially with topography, that's an interesting thing. So we originally looked at five areas of the Commission members. A number of months ago, we did a open house for Metro Everett and we modeled under existing regulations and proposed regulations. And we did that in a, we put it together in a movie and got some good feedback, at least on the product, people seemed to enjoy that. And so Josh was able to work with this in his program and then we exported it into Google Earth so we can look at it in a spatial 360 form. And so, if you remember the, this is the existing heights map, it's, can be a little confusing and daunting just to look at it. Most of the area, the, the borders are based on pre-existing zoning and that are fairly static. So for example, the Everett Station area down here has an eighty-foot height limit and that's, that's pretty set, roughly maybe seven floors in that area. A lot of the, what we call the core residential area up here, for example, forty-five feet there, it's forty-five feet, but there is a little bit of wiggle room, so in forty-five feet, you can definitely get a four-story building, but if there's a roof form that's pitched, say at a six-twelve, there is some flexibility in the code to allow the, the height of the roof, the, the peak of the roof to go above that and generally it's around ten feet. The areas that have these ranges, for example, here in eighty, my cursor's not working up there, in the north, roughly around California and Broadway, there's a, there's a huge chunk between eighty feet and one hundred and twenty feet. Eighty feet is, in this area, a base height where a developer can build to without any additional benefits. If they wanted to go beyond that, there is a cap at one hundred and twenty feet, but in order to get to that height, they'd have to incorporate what we call bonus element features such as building to a LEED certification or incorporating public open space, things of that nature. And every of the areas that have this ranges are the current B-three zone, the Central Business District Zone, and the city changed or looked at this and incorporated this with the 2006 Plan at the time. And we looked at this map and extrapolated the, the ranges of the B-three zone and incorporated that into the proposed map. Planning Commission has seen an earlier version of this. Based on some public input, we have amended some areas with the public feedback that we got at the open house and later with some elected officials. We did lower heights in some areas, especially on the, the western edge, but by and large, there seems to be a good, healthy mix. We've gotten comments that in some areas we should go higher, comments that we should go lower than proposed and some people which are, think it's kind of good, as is. With discussions with some planning commit, or planning members at the county, they suggest maybe we're at the sweet spot because we're not making necessarily everybody happy and hopefully not making too many people unhappy. But the idea here is to allow the highest buildings and the densest buildings near the center of the core, so the blue shaded area and the green shaded area have the highest height limits. And then stepping down away from there to where, when we get towards the outline areas, the zones outside Metro Everett, the building heights would be compatible and comparable to those areas, so there's not a lot of discrepancy between building heights. If you look at the map, the tiered ranges generally range from, for example, in this green area from seven to eleven, and the same concept as the current B-three zone is there. So seven floors would be an outright permitted use or permitted height, and then if they wanted to go beyond that, they would have to incorporate some additional bonus features similar to existing regulations. So originally, like I said, we, we modeled five areas for the open house and then after that, we modeled an additional eight. And it's a fairly good representation of the whole area. We've got a couple sites in the current Central Business District Zone, a couple sites in the Everett Station area zone and the majority are in the core residential area. And even though it's a core residential area, the properties don't necessarily have to incorporate residential uses if it's an underlying commercial zone, if it's a C-one zone, they can do a commercial use. And the interesting thing about our code is the intricacies and changes and devolve our regulations. So sometimes heights and density, massing issues change depending on location and use. Instead of going through each of the thirteen areas that we laid out in the packet, at this point, I think I'd just open it up to questions and discussion commissioners may have on specific areas. Again, we do have, and hopefully it's working, the Google Earth program, so if you want to look at a particular, we can zoom in and take a look at those areas.
Just one, one comment I have, on the proposed heights map, that red I can't read. So maybe like if the color, you could have the color and then the floor is next to it like as a legend or something like that.
On the text.
Yeah, might be easier.
Actually, I'm gonna cover it in because I can't read any of it, it's so small. And I don't mind being the old lady on the commission here, but I'm having, and I'm really trying to understand what's going on down by Pacific and to the west of Rutgers Avenue. I know the neighborhood, Grand Avenue, I think it is, but where those historic houses are there?
Right, the Norton Ground.
Those folks, I'm sure you're hearing from those folks.
Right.
Yeah.
So originally, before we had our open house or around the time of our open house, we, we had heights proposed to go higher at the time based on some comments, but we had some discussions with some of the members. We did lower it down to be basically existing heights. We're not proposing that anything go higher. And for the historic overlay areas, we're proposing that i-if there are any differences between either heights or regulations, development standards, anything of that nature, that the historical overlay standards would supersede that of the Metro Everett. So, yeah, there shouldn't be any changes to heights.
Okay, great. Sorry, I just haven't. Sorry, I just haven't, where am I?
Neil, in your modeling, if you use all the heights proposed, how many housing units would that create?
We haven't gone down that road yet of discussions with David. I think the, we're looking, David can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at potentially doing an analysis of employment and density for residential units. And as part of that.
It'd be good to know with 60,000 people we have to absorb, you know, and they're not all going to live in the downtown core, but make sure that we at least have enough heights to get as many of those folks.
Right.
So when, so when the city adopted the plan update in 2015, we, we showed that overall we can accommodate that population throughout the whole city. So there's not a question whether or not our existing zoning can do that. So that's, that's there. If you recall, we did have an intern last summer do some, some projections on the Metro Everett. I don't remember what those numbers are, but we did do some housing, some population projections of that. And it's a very, it's a number that's well beyond what we see as the actual market for housing in the area. But once we kind of get through the land use discussion and the draft of the development regulations, in fact, I was just talking with Josh today about us doing a new development capacity. So we'll, we'll look at both the housing and the employment for the area based on what the, the draft regulations are putting together. So we'll have updated numbers and probably be after the first of the year when we have that one, once we have a package ready to analyze.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on the height proposal?
I'm not sure if it's here or later, but related to the letter from Bob Stram, is there a conflict with building height and the floor area ratios? Do you see the conflict as he described it? Do you, do you agree there's a conflict? And then what are the remedies?
So.
And I appreciated the picture on urban design of the archaeological city, so. Probably cheers for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I, I like the picture, too. I was afraid that was being negatively spun, but I still like the picture. And in regards to Bombstram's letter, the discussion of, so currently in the central business district zone, the B3 zone, we have height regulations, but also floor ratio constrictions. We don't really have that anywhere else in the Metro Everett area. And staff, up to this point, has been leaning more towards moving away from floor ratio as a maximum cap. There's been discussion with potentially having a minimum requirement along certain corridors that we consider to be transit-oriented develop, or transit-oriented corridors like, say Broadway and Pacific, to have a minimum floor ratio so that we can get that density that we see needed, but not necessarily having a cap. That's where some, leaning more towards required setbacks at certain heights. So at, say, the fifth floor up, there would be a mandatory setback that can help control form, which I think is one of the original ideas of having a floor ratio, is to control the, the mass of a building, the perceived mass. But if you had a keen eye and you went through this, we took some artistic liberty. And especially in the downtown area, we made some buildings that maybe may appeal to certain architects like Aldo Rossi, very big, blocky rectangular buildings and, but a pedestrian would see it as massive. But if you really look at it, it's just a.
Follow-up.
Yeah. So the proposal at this point is not necessarily to continue to have floor ratios. We would have maximum heights, setbacks at certain floors, and potential floor plate maximums. So in his second, I appreciated his second, the second paragraph on the first page where he mentions inefficient high-rise square footage is around 10,000 square feet per floor. For the open house, we had some draft development regulations. And for our high-rise, I believe that's the number that we have, is about 10,000, four floors, five and up. So it's, it's pretty in line with his letter.
I had, I had another comment on that regarding that letter. And I, I didn't wholeheartedly agree with everything he said, but I did, I don't, I do think he made some good points. If you have a allowable height of 200 feet, but an FAR of three, you're going to have a hard time getting anywhere near that, that height, you know? So I think that probably, and in Seattle, at least for a time, they eliminated FARs on any projects that had residential, you know, like condominiums and apartment buildings because they wanted to encourage the, you know, the, the high-rise development, high-density, multifamily housing projects in the downtown. So I think probably, you know, the FAR, and I like that you said that we're kind of moving away from FAR just kind of as a formula and sort of a, as a prescriptive formula, and it's looking at maybe some of these other items. But you, didn't you mention something about the possibility of them getting some bonus height or bonus area if they had some sustainable design things? And you mentioned something about LEED, like if they had some, there, there is some potential for, if they, they could get some sort of bonus incentives if they.
Right.
Sustainable design project, is that right?
Right. So that, it's also a continuation of current regulations. So we have that in our B3 zone as well. But those same standards would be applicable for proposing for all of Metro Everett that has a flex, or a range of heights. So if the base, again, floor height is seven floors, if they wanted to build up to 10 floors, they could build to LEED standard or Green Globes or something of that nature.
Yeah. But it wouldn't, I mean, like, it, it does sound like there are some places where we could get a whole lot more height, but it's sort of shackled by the FAR limit. Is that correct?
Perhaps under current B3 zone standards. But again, we're not proposing FARs be in the Metro Everett development regulations as, as a maximum cap, I should say. Minimums, potentially, yes.
Okay.
Neil, I hear you say that they aren't going to be allowed FARs?
We're discussing not having a maximum FAR. On certain streets like Broadway or Pacific's designations, where we see them as being mixed-use corridors or transit-oriented corridors, we could see, we're suggesting at this point having there be a minimum floor ratio so that you would have to get that density.
The reason I say that, when we sat through the developer in the Everett Station, and you know, these are guys that do it, I would hope that we leave some flexibility because of, you know, there are certain lending institutions that lend to certain developers, and that's their, that's how they make things work. And like Ed said, you know, it's going to take some catalyst to get this going. And so I would just hope that we would leave some flexibility in this, and maybe we put some sort of timeframe until there's X amount of units or something so that we can attract those folks that, that think and build that way.
There's also, one of the things we're discussing is to have a flexibility, like you're talking about, is, is a modification process so that if something didn't, if, if we had a proposal that didn't quite meet that threshold, that we would have a more strict review so that maybe instead of going from an outright permitted use, go through administrative review process to where we could inform the public, maybe have additional design review standards and get some feedback from the public on.
It's just when you, I work with different site locators, and you know, there's, there's just little things that they have bookmarked. And if you don't have those things, you're probably, you know, your, your jurisdiction doesn't get looked at. And so I think that's something that's important to at least say there's some flexibility or something about it because I'm not, I, I think we should have many, because it's going to take some things to get this thing started. And we heard loud and clear two months ago, when that group was in town, some folks from Bellevue and some folks from Seattle that do this kind of thing for a living, and that, again, was one of the questions they asked. And I know it's different than the Everett Station area, but.
At this point, I'm foreseeing that we would have some flexibility, either as a, like I said, an administrative review modification, or maybe even as a, through a conditional there was, or I should say variance in the B3 zone. When that was 2006, when we, it was right off the presses, we had almost an immediate variance request to not meet a minimum floor ratio. We had a minimum standard of .75, and there was a developer that wanted to do something less than that. So that is also some wiggle room.
Is that a long, laborious process? Is that something when this site locator says, hey, let's go to Everett, and they say that we, we got this, if we're going to do this, we got to go through this extra process? It's two months, three months? It's.
It's, there's a process. But we anticipate not using a variance process where you're going to a hearing examiner, but more of an administrative process that's quicker and does still provide some notice to surrounding property owners. But that's how our current modification process works. We're going to also have different design standards than we now have. And so those haven't been completed or drafted to where we're ready to roll those out for public review. We've got a lot of work to do yet before those are going to be.
Thank you.
Subject of intense review, I'm sure, by people who are interested in developing. But the main thing is that our approach is to make it easy to do the right thing, what we want to encourage people to do. But in the case of the transit-oriented corridors, the idea is not allow properties to be underdeveloped so that we're really wasting a lot of that capacity that we're, where we want to encourage intensive development. So the minimum floor area ratio, the minimum floor area ratio would be really making somebody build something perhaps taller or with more floor area than they might want to, to do something like a strip mall or a fast food restaurant, you know? That's not the kind of transit-oriented development that we would be looking for in those quarters. And so that's one tool to discourage that.
Thanks.
And as we talked about before, Alan, Neil said, once this gets further along, I think it would be great to bring back an example of a, maybe a project that was, has developed in the city already, or, you know, a project that, you know, is a speculative project or something, to, and to go through that exercise so we understand that we're not creating any hindrances to the development community.
Sure. No, that'll, we'll do a lot of testing like that.
I had just a couple more, just small items on that. You know, you mentioned the possibility of doing an analysis of what the maximum, if you were to max out the entire metro area with the highest, you know, the tallest and the most volume of development that you could possibly get with the highest and best use of every piece of property. And it sounded like that's what you were talking about.
No, that's something, you know, the theoretical maximum is not really useful because we know the market just doesn't function like that. You know, we want to put, when we, when we look at increasing the capacity of our metro area, it's, we would not assume that every parcel will be built to the maximum permitted height and density. So that's, that's not a very useful metric.
Well, it seems like, I mean, I would be, obviously, there would be holes in it where you have maybe a historical project or something, but you know, I think that, I, I don't know, you know, to, to understand what the potential could be. I mean, we have a lot of, you know, underutilized properties where they go in, you know, the metro area and they build, you know, a drive-through fast food restaurant, you know? When that block could have been a high-rise building or something, you know, substantial that, you know, it almost, you know, I, I feel that we could, there is a potential volume that we could sort of identify, that there may be, you know, exceptions to that. And another thing I meant, you know, I understood about the, the historical thing, and I've, I've said in previous meetings, I don't, I like to be protective of those historical overlays. However, you know, sometimes, you know, you go to New York City and sometimes you have a, you know, a 250-year-old cathedral, but it's got like high-rise buildings all around it. And in that case, you know, obviously, you, you can't, you know, you can't, you can't stop that, the, the progress of that, that development. I mean, those, those high-rise buildings are going to be there, and you know, they, they're not, they don't, they're not really in conflict, I guess is what I'm saying. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to be dogmatic about historical overlays. On the other hand, you know, I want to be sensitive to those residential neighborhoods where there's people living in them. But I think you can have both, I guess is what I'm saying, in a metro area. You can have, you can have both. You can have high-rise development and historical buildings, and they, they can be compatible.
We did have someone signed up to talk regarding building heights before we move on to design. And so Gene Hewitt, would you like to come up and address the planning commission? Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I live on Grand Avenue here in Everett, between 33rd and 34th. I've been aware and keeping track of the progress of the comprehensive plan in the last few years, and I'm continually impressed with the monumental undertaking that the planning commission and the planning department have had to undertake. To add a significant number of units, you said 60,000, to this area is pretty daunting and the ripple effect through the infrastructure and transportation, it's really all encompassing. And I found that the planning department, Neil's in particular, spent some time with me to talk about our historic neighborhood and where the height, building heights would change. And, you know, when this process is over, you know, we're going to have a framework for a really prosperous, vital city. Many people welcome the change, and, but change can also be very difficult as well. And that being said, there are some changes that are being proposed for the Norton Grand overlay, or I like to call it a district, that could really seriously affect our neighborhood. When I look at the massing models for, I think it's 1A or the Area 1, there are some pretty significant changes where the height change would almost double what's, what we have already. When you look at the corner of, I, I don't want to get into specifics because you guys have all the, the, the information there, but we're talking about the blocks from Pacific to 32nd, 33rd, and 34th, and specifically on the alley east of Rucker. Some of those changes are going from 80 feet to between seven and 11 stories. And also, when we're talking 33rd and 34th, from 65 feet to allowing eight stories. Now, across from the alley, there's an historic home there. There's a family who lives there. And to put an eight-story building in someone's backyard like that, I think, I think maybe there's something that we can do to mitigate some of that change. Either it's a setback, or maybe it's not going as high. Maybe it's keeping the, the heights to 65 feet. I mean, the livability of that home, no sun until the late morning, all those families in your backyard, you know, it's, it would raise, to raise the height limits to this degree would make these homes less desirable for families to, to move into, ripe for sale and redevelopment, to be knocked down. And it would destroy the history that we've sought to preserve and we promised to preserve. So I urge you to take a look at those blocks again. And also on the west side as well, around Norton, there are other areas in our city that can accommodate higher buildings without gutting the historic neighborhoods. I moved here because of the hometown feel, because I wanted to live in an historic district, and I wanted to escape the rampant, and sometimes I feel thoughtless over development in Seattle. Just recently, in Maestri alone, we've welcomed two or three new families with lots of kids. As a matter of fact, I was late today because there was a baseball game in, in the intersection of 33rd and Grand. Some kids were playing baseball. And it's just great. I mean, this neighborhood has really experienced a revitalization that will continue if we can preserve that feeling. So I would love to have you guys reconsider this area again for the height changes, partner with us, talk to us, maybe we can all come up with some different ideas. Because I'd like to live in an Everett that honors the past, but also embraces the future. And I thank you all for your time. And I thank everybody from the planning department who have taken my calls throughout the years and have been really helpful and, and really have heard what we've had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Yer. Anyone else wants to?
Anyone else wants to address the planning commission regarding heights?
Good evening, Victor Harris. One comment that Mrs. Hewitt brought up, and I'd like to maybe get a clarification on that. When we did the Broadway Plan, there was a statement in that saying something about new buildings, tall structures having to be in balance with the existing buildings or the other buildings around it. That is, if you had a one-story building, you couldn't just plop in a five-story building. You had to be size appropriate and scale it to maybe two or three, as you build it up rather than shoot up. Is there a limitation of this thing on this block that she has brought up? Or is it just wide open that anybody could just put in maximum height? Thank you.
Stan?
So for Broadway, on the Broadway mixed use, there's, there's a range of heights, north and south, and then on the northern and southern edge, and then in the middle, the, for residential developments, they can go up to generally 65 feet. For commercial, it drops down to 35 feet. There is a provision that allows a non-residential, commercial building to go up to the maximum height. It would go through a stricter administrative review process. I'm not sure for Broadway, but I know there is for the Evergreen and the plan there, there was regulations for setbacks for adjacent residential zones. I think that's what Victor was talking about. So that if the next, if there's, for example, in RTO, a single-family residential zone that has a height limit of 28 feet, but the next corridor over is a BMU or E1 that has a higher height limit, new proposed buildings for a certain distance that are adjacent to a lower density zone would have a height limit that's compatible with that zone. And that's something that we're proposing be drafted into this as well. So, for example, even though we may have a section of the metro area that could potentially go up to five floors in height, if the adjacent zone was 28 feet, then for a certain distance, those adjacent parcels in the metro area would have to be of a compatible height to the neighboring zone.
Now, with that, so on those edges of the historic Norton, Pacific, all those just on the, you know, the south edge and the west edge, and would that draft proposal apply to those areas or those similar zoning? So it's based on zoning. You have a, you have a higher density zoning and adjacent to a lower density, whether it's single-family or multifamily zoning, that you have a potential increased setback for height? Are we talking about the same zoning on these western and southern edges where that regulation would not apply?
I think I have your question. Let me see if I can answer both yours and Mrs. Hewitt. So this is Pacific here and Rucker here, north being up. And the Norton Grand, right here along Pacific, goes down this alley here. So it's just before we get to Rucker. So this building is, and these, this is under current regulations. So we tried to model what's currently a vacant lot right here, primarily under what current heights would go up to. So it's roughly three floors. It's about 35 heights is the maximum that we can get to. Along Rucker, which I think is some of the concern, which is outside the Norton Grand, there's a height limit that can get up to a mass of roughly six floors. Now, there is some topography change, but still, even under existing regulations, if you look at the mass of the structure next to these single-family homes, there is some discrepancy. I believe when we, no, we modeled, this is one of the areas that we modeled for the open house, it was pre, pre comments, but I believed we amended some of our proposed heights. Yeah, so.
Sorry.
So, right, so if you, if you look, it is, along Rucker, it is higher, but we do have some of these setbacks to allow some compatibility. Rucker is, by the way, one of the areas that we're considering to be designated as a transit-oriented development corridor. It does have SWIFT, and it does have a lot of transit activity along there. But this is one of the areas that we are suggesting go higher. So, for example, this would be, this is the existing height in the massing, basically about five floors higher, but regulations would, in some measure, require some setbacks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to address the planning commission regarding height this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
Michelle Carmody, 2519 Baker Avenue. I was at the previous meeting where they took all the comments, and I appreciate that they did listen because there are changes here that some of us brought. And while I appreciate going from down in the core to a no maximum, which was the previous thing, to 25 stories, I still think that is too tall, 20 stories. As you said, I've moved here because of whatever it is now, or has been. I've been here 27 years, and I enjoy and appreciate the growth that we've, that we have. And 20 stories is just enough. And I've spoken with other people who also feel that, but 25 is better than no maximum. And when you're talking about the maximum capacity and if everything built up to it, I would hope not. I just not long ago went up to Vancouver, B.C., where I had lived previously, and it is horrible what has happened because it is in, in the downtown area, max capacity. I mean, they are high-rise, 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 not one on a block, but four on a block. And it's horrible, just ugly, and not someplace I would ever live again. And I appreciate these pictures on these ones, or I appreciate that, because that really shows exact perspective. These are two different views of the same area, doesn't really, they're not very helpful because if you're looking at like this one with this building, which I believe is the same one, and then this, it's a total different perspective. So it's, it's not as helpful to see that. See, this is much more enlightening and shows how that would be horrible if I lived in one of those houses right now and someone bought that land and built that building in front of my house, or behind it even, would be terrible. And I agree also with the gentleman who talked about balance and preserving the historical legacy and character. While you can put a high-rise next to a cathedral, that also has happened in Vancouver, and it just diminishes that historical beauty and perspective and the character of it all. I mean, so the, you know, going gradually would be a much more appealing option rather than shooting up like that right next to a lower area. But thank you for all the work you're doing. It's, it is great. And I'm not sure I understood what timeline factor this is on.
So timeline, we're hoping to have draft development regulations and uses and all that stuff in front of planning commission later this year, maybe in about a month, and then have another open house towards the end of this year, maybe in the first part of December. And then the first quarter of 2018, bring a complete package in front of the planning commission to have workshops and a hearing. So maybe by late, or February, March, maybe have a recommendation from planning commission to go forward to city council.
Okay. So this is not a decision-making business? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to address? Mr. Anderson, do you want to address this on height or the next topic?
Okay, great.
Any other questions regarding height or comments?
Back to what actually is proposed now, just, I just want to say that.
So this, this would be proposed, existing, is that?
Thank you. That's helpful.
On Rucker, just on the east side of the alley.
Just a brief comment that I have, I'll be as, try to be as kind as I can about it, but, you know, where did you, where did you get the, sort of the architectural treatment for these buildings? Did you just kind of find something that looked like it would work and stick it in there, or what?
There's a program called City Engine, which is put out by Esri, who does ArchIS and ArcMap. And basically, it offers a template of procedures that you can apply to, to footprints of buildings. So basically, the process is, and I'm not in any way architecturally trained, but basically, you apply the dimensions via a footprint, and then you can decide various like facade treatments, you know, what substance they use for that, whether the roots, the roofs are gable or hip or flat and what the substance.
That, you answered that question.
But it's not, it's not.
Right. What I was just going to suggest is that in the planning stages, we generally keep these, these shapes sort of abstract. We use white rectangles and blocks because, you know, it's, you know, you really, it gets a little ahead of it to try to decide what the building's going to look like. You know, I'm an architect, so, you know, I'm oversensitive. And, you know, sometimes we create these, the sort of representations, they look like they're made out of glass, so you can actually see the floor levels, but you can almost, you can actually see through them, and it just kind of dematerializes. And that these things are kind of blocky and sort of, well, from my point of view, they're abominations. So I would, I would stick to, you know, what they used to, planning departments at the university level, they always use, they actually used sugar cubes back in like the 70s, you know, to do study models because they wanted to keep it abstract, you know, because that, it's, it's like a blank canvas, you know? You wouldn't, you wouldn't rough out a, you know, rough out a painting and then hand it to Pablo Picasso and say, here, you go ahead and finish it, you know? It just, I, I, I think that if, it's a, it's a much gentler way to, to express the, you know, what you're talking about, you're quantifying heights and volumes, and there are often subtle nuances like changes in topography that actually, you know, in any case, even in some of the other presentations we've seen tonight, you see, it's a much more sort of, much more subtle expression. So that's my advice on, you know, doing these massing studies. Now, don't try to, you know, just take the architecture off and leave it as a, sort of a blank cube.
Thank you. Any more comments on height? We move on to design standards, or is that, was that?
The urban design chapter?
Yeah.
So for the urban design chapter, the ref drafts, basically, urban design is, is a large topic. It's, it's very comprehensive, and it spans a lot of different practices from architecture, landscape architecture, transportation planning, urban planning, engineering, civil engineering. There's a lot of different practices that go into this. And how the built environment, that's made by humans, building structures, streets, and how it interacts with the natural environment, the topography and views and things of that nature. Discussion of urban form, whereas if we look at a building in architecture, it's very specific and site-specific. With urban form, we start looking more comprehensively, we start stepping back and looking at larger blocks and groupings of blocks, and how buildings over time may have developed a pattern of massing in heights and how they engage the streets, of that nature. For most of Metro Everett, it was platted and the urban form was laid out at the end of the 1800s. So in relation to Mohanjoon Daro, we're a fairly new city. But by and large, the blocks are fairly consistent in a north-south fashion. From street to street, it's about 400 feet long, and east to west, street to street, it's about 250 feet. There are some slight nuances, like in the riverside and the northeast quarter, there's some different block patterns and topography down towards the west. But by and large, the urban pattern is pretty consistent. And the development that has, over time, developed, especially in the early era when the Metro Everett was the beginnings of the city and the heart, along certain corridors like Hewitt and Nod's, Hewitt and Colby and Wetmore, we have commercial buildings of a certain stature and size that are built upright to the streets. There's a lot of engagement with buildings next to each other. Some of them share party walls. If they're lucky, they have their own firewall, but historically, buildings have shared interior walls, so we don't have a lot of interior side setbacks. There's really no front setback. The front of the buildings generally engage the sidewalk. And when we move a little bit further out into the multifamily residential zones, we see that loosening up a bit and becoming a little bit more comfortable so that we start having setbacks of, say, around 10 feet, where people use landscaping and lawn, and we start seeing setbacks between buildings and properties to allow for more air and light, and heights of buildings decrease. And then if we move even further out to single-family zones, we see that even more so. It becomes much more lax. So we have setbacks of 20 and 30 feet of lawn space in the, in the front yard. So the, the character of the urban form changes. Urban form and uses historically had more oomph to it than perhaps we do now. Would love at some point to wax nerdy with Commissioner Jordanson on venturi and concepts of form and things like that nature. But in essence, uses used to have more impact on urban form. So if you, if you walk down a street corridor, for example, and you pass a religious institution, if it was a church or a cathedral or a synagogue or a mosque, you would know what use was in that just by the way the structure was designed. Likewise, if you went by a financial institution, it had a totally different character and artistic style to it that had more like gravitas and imposingness to it. And you wouldn't ever expect to have residential units in a structure that was a bank. But with the modern era, things shifted. We can now walk down a street and look at a commercial block building, and there could be services of congregation there, and you wouldn't necessarily know it. Churches have been adaptively used to house community centers and artistic venues, and even modern forms like big boxes, and they've outlived their resources, are being creatively, adaptively reused for housing. So urban form and uses at one point shaped the built environment, but not so much nowadays. Like, single-family homes, we have typologies where you would have normally expected a commercial use. It's a lot of concrete, steel, glass, and lines that are angular and very clean. And at one point, that would have been commercial, but it's now residential. So modern era helped juggle things around. And then there's other elements, sidewalks and streets. And then there's other elements, sidewalks and streets, lighting, landscaping signs, these all impact the urban environment and how we interact with it. If we have, if we're walking down a large retail street, say like on Hewitt, larger sidewalks allow for ease of pedestrian movement, but also potentially can allow for commercial uses to seep out on there, and it can add a sense of formality to a space, whereas when we move out further into multifamily residential zones, that streetscape becomes more soft, maybe sidewalks become more narrow, there's more landscaping, can help soften up the built environment. Looking at policies, we have quite a number of extensive policies in the comprehensive plan that deal with urban design, some that are very specific towards Metro Everett, and then those that are more comprehensive to the city as a whole. So for example, a policy that we have directly relating to Metro Everett is to have Hewitt Avenue encouraged as a connector between the riverfront and the harbor front, and have signage that shows historic properties and people that were important to the founding of Everett. And then there's other policies of a more broad nature that still impact Metro Everett but are also citywide. For example, designing civic facilities as focal points that have landscaping and view access. So we have a number of existing policies that we intend to keep and not necessarily duplicate into the Metro Everett plan. With the proposed policies for Metro Everett, we have, for example, building heights and massing, looking back at the height map that we had before of suggesting that the most dense and highest buildings be near the center and the core, and that it tiered down so that around the surrounding residential areas, it's not as imposing. Mixed-use corridors, transit-oriented development corridors, suggested policy of requiring minimum heights and minimum floor ratio potentially so that we can grab the density that we need around these important corridors. Uses still have some area, I think, for developing policy, for example, multifamily residential development. If we have them right next to arterials, there can be some compatibility issues, especially on the first floor. There's a great example in Lenwood off 164th, if you're familiar with 164th, it's a huge right-of-way, and the development, which is relatively new, isn't that far separated from the street. It's got some landscaping, it's relatively new, so it's not mature and there's no fencing. And I don't think there's a time that I've walked or driven by that property that the people who live on the first floor ever have their windows open. It's, it's not a hospital environment. So potentially crafting policies that says there needs to be some pedestrian separation or sensitivity between ground floor uses of a primarily residential nature and the, and the rights-of-way. Similarly, commercial or industrial, maybe there needs to be some compatibility studies, especially in a light industrial nature, if it's abutting in a residential zone, maybe there needs to be some separation there or some sort of treatment. And civic and institutional, if we look at expanding civic buildings, like with the courthouse, for example, or the hospital, realizing that sometimes increasing height and massing at a site specific location is, potentially is more appropriate than having those same uses be subject to a different location, like with city resources where you have to go from one building to another building throughout the city to get a question answered. And then public spaces and public realm, again, plazas, parks, sidewalks, lighting, increasing parks, we've heard that with Metro Everett or the Everett Station District Alliance. Improving sidewalks is one way that we can really, as a city, put our best foot forward. There's a number of areas where our sidewalks are lacking, especially in the Everett Station area, we have some, some gaps. And looking at lighting and ways in which that we can make it a more pedestrian-friendly environment. I believe with that, I'll leave it to any questions on a substantive nature, if there's policies that you think should be included or amended, also on a stylistic way. We've been, after this draft, we've already discussed ways in which we can potentially craft it to be a little bit more maybe user-friendly, putting policies up in text instead of at the very end, but, so any suggestions and feedback on substance and format would be appreciated.
Comments? Mr. Bev?
My only suggestion is less is more, the less prescriptive we can be, but I think making sure that there are good buffers between streets and things like that in terms of residential, they're not maximizing the parcel so much that it's creating a problem for people who have to live on the first floor, as you were saying. But it's, you know, once we understand kind of the bulk, the capacity, and what we want the street nature to be in these areas, be as flexible as possible.
Any additional comments?
I had some questions in one of the past presentations, and I thought we talked about getting to it in urban design, just around enforcement of derelict properties. So is that going to be, is that part of urban design?
Okay. David just was saying that that'll be discussed in the land use discussion, that'll be coming up in a couple of weeks here.
Okay. Then, besides that, I was also thinking maybe adding in, when they talk, when you talk about corridors, in light of the conversation we had with the station alliance, adding in that 32nd and McDougal as a corridor leading to Metro Everett enhancement area. And then also including some mention of climate change, so maybe around street sidewalks and pedestrian environment, either to include mitigation, like more urban forestry efficiency standards for buildings, or focusing on transit-oriented, even emergency response, but something acknowledging like the need for including climate change, both mitigation and reduction techniques within the urban environment. And then I noticed you had the light pollution, which was a comment, a citizen comment from the last meeting from Mary, so that was good to see that recognition of the impact on wildlife in that. And then just one more about maybe including like green roofs and sustainable landscaping within the talk of, yeah, some of these policies. So not just incorporating native species, but trying to, there's a certified sustainable landscaping program, that would be great to incentivize programs like that. And so on these urban, in this appendix for these policies, are these from the comprehensive plan or are these all new policies for Metro Everett?
Existing from the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan, okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment, the, the image you have on page nine shows a little, a little park sort of picnic bench, you know, dining area out on a sidewalk, that's just, it's too bad Commissioner Lark's not here.
Exactly. Parklet. It's called a parklet.
Yeah, he, this is exactly what he was talking about.
Yep.
I think it's a fun idea and probably wouldn't be very expensive, and you know, you could slip it in just about anywhere. So that's right on, you know.
Niels, on the, as we get closer to, a couple meetings ago, I asked about, you know, the port and the railroad and the Navy base, and as we get closer to those important infrastructures in our area, that will a different set of standards be required or these standards will go boundary to boundary?
So the standards would be boundary to boundary zones. One of the latest discussions we've had, maybe David can correct me if I'm wrong, is to, similar to how the city implemented an airport compatibility zone and regulations therein, that we would do something similar with the port and have a buffer of particular mounts on the western edge, that would be like a port compatibility zone.
Thank you.
Talk about it in two weeks.
Mr. Anderson, I know you wanted to address the planning commission on this topic, so...
Good evening, Commissioners Graham Anderson, Port of Everett. I'll be brief, mercifully brief in my comments tonight, probably more general in nature as opposed to, you know, urban design or building height specifically. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight in a workshop setting and want to make comments on behalf of the port. You know, to join the chorus tonight, compliments to city staff for their diligent and highly professional work as they continue to work and develop and refine the metro plan. You know, Alan, David and Niels have been very open to our communication, and we really appreciate that. The port's executive director, Les Hirdens, wanted me to make sure that conveyed several items for the record. One of those is that the port has been and will continue to be engaged in the metro plan process. And just to confirm, which I believe has already happened, that the port and the Everett, or the EAC letter of August 25th regarding the metro plan has already been formally entered into the record. I think you have copies of those, or that letter. And then also confirm that the Naval Station Everett's letter from Captain Le Camp of August 24th has also been formally entered into the record, and that you have copies of those. I trust that's the case. Briefly reiterating the points in those two letters, those letters really spoke to implementing a land use impact overlay that is called for in the ports, or excuse, in the marine port element of the city's comprehensive plan, the recognition of a military influence area, as the Navy has stated, for Naval Station Everett, identification of the National Freight Corridor within the metro plan, and I believe that's already been done by planning staff, and identification of the heavy industrial area adjacent to the metro plan boundary, which includes our seaport. These are items that we've talked about with city staff and will continue the engagement and how best to represent that. You know, the port recognizes the mandate and the requirement for the city to accommodate, you know, substantial residential growth has already been talked about, and we certainly understand that and not speaking in any opposition towards heights or densities. You know, I think the, probably the biggest message I could convey tonight is the underlying concept that the port has to outline that before you, and that is of a balanced waterfront. And what we mean by that, the port's concept is like the deep water terminals and the Naval Station Everett kind of form the working waterfront on the saltwater side. And north of the Navy Base, the port's Marina Basins, waterfront place central, and around the peninsula to where Riverside Business Park is, those are where the shoreline public access trails and recreational opportunities are. And so the, the working waterfront, including the seaport, needs to generate a reasonable rate of economic return in order to afford the public amenities, and so therein lies the balance, the working waterfront and a more recreational and public access-oriented waterfront. With regard to the marine terminals specifically, the port is investing a significant amount of capital in the infrastructure there in order to accommodate not only our existing clients, which include the aerospace sector, but also attracting future international shipping, shipping cargoes. And so there's kind of both retaining the existing base that we have and attracting and competing in the international arena. In fact, the wharf strengthening at South Terminal is the, is the port commission's number one initiative going forward. You know, the, the perspective that we have for the emerging metro plan is along these lines, you know, let's see if we can recognize the working waterfront that we talked about, you know, through a narrative or cross-referencing, highlighting the relationship of the marine port element in the city's comp plan now with the metro plan. I think that would be helpful. The marine port element already has policies that are intended to reduce the potential for land use conflicts between the port-related uses and the surrounding non-industrial uses. We were just kind of talking about that a little bit, and probably a lot more to talk about in terms of the next session with the land use policies as they come forward. I think the biggest thing that I could remark in terms of what we're trying to avoid is just an incompatible land use situation where we have a working waterfront, and I, I think to the staff's credit, they've already identified a couple of items that in the economic opportunities section where there's talk of a policy of how to minimize housing and industrial incompatibility. I think that's the kind of thing that we appreciate and we're going to look forward to commenting on as the plan continues to unfold, because what we're really trying to avoid is a problem that most urban ports are facing right now, where you've got a real area of conflict right between a working waterfront and a residential or a mixed use set of land uses right next door. And I think as the marine port element speaks to, it's up to port and, and city staff to work together to create a, an overlay so we can minimize those potential conflicts. So I think those are the general comments we wanted to get on the record and happy to continue the dialogue with city staff, and we think they're doing a great job. And I think the main thing for the port is to convey this concept of the balanced waterfront, and that's kind of what we're looking for and how we are wanting to be engaged with the metro plan, seeing the, the marine port element and the metro plan harmonized as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to address the planning commission regarding the urban design concepts or heights, or seeing none? Any other comments or questions for staff? Seeing none, so I guess we'll see everybody on the, Victor, okay.
Thank you, Victor Harris. I hesitated because I wasn't quite sure where my comments would fit in. First thing that does come to mind was the question of 10-foot setbacks between buildings. And I have to say, that proved very valuable last week, as I saved one building down there at 2900 Broadway, having that 10-foot space between buildings that's on fire and giving the fire department a chance to cool off one building. Now, I will admit that the fire science is changing, maybe that's not necessary, but you still have people who like to save money by turning off fire valves and such, so maybe spacing between buildings is still critical. Some of the other things that came out tonight that I think should be mentioned here is one, don't be shy about having meetings at the Everett Station. And I don't necessarily mean the planning commission, but I mean anybody in the community. Encourage those meetings. I've heard people say they don't like going down there, they don't like going down there at night because they're uncomfortable. They're uncomfortable because we've given it away. If we go down there, we make people who are, shall we say, unsavory characters uncomfortable. There'd be more of us and less of them. That's the message that we as a community have to deliver. Broadway's boundary on some of what we've been talking about tonight is critical, but one thing we have to remember in this is whatever we do in this Everett Station area especially, is that will bleed over to the west side of Broadway. I hope it's a positive influence. I hope it's a positive influence, I think it will be, but just keep in mind that whatever we do here will have, I believe, will have a significant impact on the Longfellow neighborhood. We talk about buildings in the Everett Station area, it struck me over the years, can we build a ten-story building across the street from the station, or somewhere along Smith Avenue, that is, shall I say, soundproof, that is attractive to, I don't know, perhaps attorneys, accountants, some moneyed people that have good jobs in downtown Seattle that want to be able to walk across the street, hop on a train, and get downtown Seattle. People start moving up this way from downtown Seattle, it becomes the question of what can we make attractive. I think it's very important that we start developing this area, both downtown, the station, whatever else around this area, as a high-dollar neighborhood. We have a lot of low income, I think we have too much low income, and that is impacting what we do as a city. We need to be sure that we are being attractive to some people, some residents, who don't mind having a Park Avenue-style condominium across the street from the train station. I know our science will keep that noise to a minimum. And I believe I will leave you on that happy note. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other comments from staff this evening? I guess we're driven, see you on the 17th.
Seventeenth.
Thank you.